Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome 2024. This is the first meeting. January second, twenty twenty four for the Delta County Commissioners' regular meeting. And I'll wait till everybody can join us here. Good morning. Happy New Year, everybody. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Do we have any additions or edits to our attendance?
I have none.
Very good. The agenda stands as presented. It's one time. Anybody like to visit with the commissioners this morning?
There wasn't a yes on there.
Okay, I won't take it yet. Would anybody like to visit with commissioners this morning? Please make sure that mic is on.
Is the mic on? Morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Nico Lo. I live on Unilock Road outside of Crawford. I hope everybody had a happy holiday. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the current land use code situation. I do want to say thank you so much for all the time you've been spending on it. I did, I got the latest version and a lot of it's looking, looking pretty sharp in there. One disappointment, though, is that it's the exact same page count as the one that you rejected in February. And I did, I could, I don't have the pages, but I, there's a lot of little specific things, words here and there that could be removed to make it shorter, if that was interesting, but. Considering that the planning commission recently rejected this revision as well, I thought perhaps it's time for trying something new. And that's what I want to offer you for consideration is the very same thing I asked for a year ago and other people have asked for, and that's to de-plead the code. To, to let this code be focused on the commercial and industrial activities and then subdivisions and return, rather than saying people are allowed to build houses in ADU, just to exempt that as it used to be. Because this code is doing a lot to, to develop clean regulation for such development. But the problem that I see is the scope is so broad because it's regulating things that can have a potential to make a material and physical impact on the neighborhood, on the neighbors, but the same book was all the way down to regulating how somebody can live in a camper on their own property. And the issue is, I mean, this person's not harming anybody. Well, this entity has the potential to call it great harm. And either one goes in violation of the code. There's only one chapter thirteen. So I haven't noticed in there if there's a way of differentiating what level of violation occurs. But just in terms of, especially in today's economy, where housing is getting ridiculous, affordable housing is kind of nonexistent and affordable rents is like an oxymoron. But if somebody's able to get a piece of property and all they can do right now is pull a camper onto it and live in it, they shouldn't have to hold that over their head like, oh, I might be in violation of something. I might not be doing right. If that's what they can do, then they don't need to be involved in the code as it is. Another thing I'd like to ask you, we, we brought this up before several of us, and that's to bring back the area planning committees. Because I know a lot of folks want to be involved in the planning process, but it's very difficult for a lot of folks to get down here to these meetings in the morning on a workday, and it's also difficult for folks to get down to the planning commission meetings. We can start in the watersheds where development is to occur. I think a lot more folks would be able to participate and appreciate that. And I know in the code, it does have an allowance for neighborhood meetings. But this is also directed by the director rather than sprouting up from the community itself. So, and I think if you could do these two things, consider these two things of pleading the code and, and returning APCs, a lot of folks would have a lot more support for this code. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is misinformation. I saw in a recent Spotlight article, a press release, it was, it was mentioned again, misinformation. And I just want to ask you to be fair and balanced when you call out misinformation. Because there was, I think it was an August DCI article where it said, back in, back in February, things were shut down due to a potential bomb threat. And that's misinformation because the actual threat was a suggestion of a threat that somebody might break a window while the news crew is there. So if you're going to call out misinformation, please just be fair and do it to everybody. And that's all I have there. And then one last thought, though, you're going to get another chairman today, and I think it'd be really cool if Commissioner Supas could be chairman for his last year in office.
I don't think, I don't think that's cool at all, but.
It's so good, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you. Anybody else here in person? Anybody online?
Mr. Carlson, did you want to speak?
Oh, yes, I need to.
You had just indicated yes, so.
Yeah, my only cap is being on behalf of the spotlight.
The nine o'clock. Well, very good. I appreciate everybody being here. We'll turn it over to county clerk.
I have an announcement for December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Are there, what accounting commissioner minutes? Are there any additions, changes, or deletions? Thank you. I also have the consideration of a liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant and an on and off premises for the business marketing and advertising incorporated doing business as Gunnison River Pleasure Park located at eight nine four nine Pleasure Park Road in Hotchkiss. I have received all necessary documentation and fees. I've also reached out to the sheriff and there has been no issues with this, with either of these licenses, so I would recommend approval of both licenses.
I'll move that the board approved the liquor license renewal for hotel and restaurant and fermented malt beverage on off premises for business marketing and advertising incorporated for business marketing and advertising incorporated, excuse me. Doing businesses Gunnison River Pleasure Park located at eight nine four nine Pleasure Park Road in Hotchkiss.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. That'll bring us to commissioner business, and before we dive into the commissioner business, I'd like to do one quick thing. Don, would you come join Mike and I up here? Right here. You don't give me that look. And so everybody knows, Don Supas was elected President of Colorado Counties, Inc. He represents Delta County very well. He has been very engaged in CCI for many, many years. And his work and efforts there has paid off for not only Delta County, but the Western Slope. We have this little plaque here commemorating that for you. We appreciate all you do for Boston, for Delta County.
Well, thank you. You guys might should have waited till this was done. I might get thrown out, so.
You got a point there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now we'll jump into formal commissioner business.
Okay, first item of business then is appointment of Board of County Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair.
We'll, I'll nominate Mike Lane to serve as twenty twenty four chairman and Wimble Koontz to serve as twenty twenty four vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion hearing? None? Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Want to keep your chair?
No, I won't stay. You can grab the placards you could have.
Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you very much. It's quite an honor to serve as a chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Delta County. Additionally, we rotate around in some counties, the chairman stays on for a number of years, but we like to rotate it each year, so. Thank you very much. The next item, board's consideration of the Board of County Commission reorganization and appointments to the various boards and committees.
So before you, you have all of the appointees of the various committees, boards, partnerships. So if you want to just start down on number three, the ADA coordinator. Now that's because now we have the website as well, but that's a dip, that's the CADA, which is through Colorado. But ADA then typically is HR. And so recommendation from staff is to maintain Michelle Bear as ADA coordinator.
I think that's a good idea. Same.
Yep.
No one else stepped up to be county attorney?
God, we tried. Oh, man, we tried.
Recommendation to maintain with John Bear?
Yep.
County Budget Officer, Leona Anderson is our existing recommendation is to stay with the very best.
Yep.
Commissioner to convey typically is the chair.
Yep.
Courthouse Complex Commissioner currently is Don Supas.
I will continue in that role with our projects going on.
We appreciate that.
Courthouse Security Committee currently is Commissioner Supas as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I can do that.
Emergency Preparedness Director, Chris Stewart. Emergency Preparedness Commissioner primarily for the LEPC. Wendell, that is currently you.
I'll continue that.
Commissioner for FEMA and Disaster Funds, Wendell, currently that is you.
Correct.
Board of Health Chairman.
That'll be Mike now.
Board of Health Vice Chair.
Congratulations, Wendell.
Board of Health of Human Services Chair would be Mike then.
Yep.
And Wendell for Vice. Regional Emergency Medical and Trauma Service Advisory Council Representative currently is Kirby Clark. Kirby has agreed to continue.
Perfect.
And the alternate is Kaylee Wright at Delta Health at their hospital, and she's agreed to continue. Eighteen, we have Blake Field Airport Advisory Committee, and then we do need to add North Fork Airport Advisory Committee.
I, I will be willing to continue on the Blake Field. And then I thought, did you, did ten, were we going to put ten?
We're going to put ten for the North Fork.
Okay. Unity Corrections. Mike, I believe that is currently you.
I'll continue, yeah.
EMS Services Representative then, that is similar to our RETAC recommendation is to put Kirby Clark and Kaylee right there. Fair Board Representative, attend meetings in the corresponding district. They do not move around the district as previous. Primarily, they move primarily at the fairgrounds and here at the courthouse.
Just put all of us on that again, so.
Can.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Delta Housing Task Force, Mike, that's currently you.
Okay.
Seventh Judicial District Representative.
Who is it currently?
Commissioner Lane.
I'll continue.
County Juvenile Diversion Board.
Like, I'm, I'll do that again.
And Seventh Judicial District Juvenile Planning.
Part of the same thing. We'll keep it.
Okay. Library Board Representative is currently all three of you. Prevention and Recovery on Drug-Free Delta County. Currently, Mike, that is you.
Okay.
I do not know any update on Midwestern Mental Health. Did not know if that is still functioning. We can hold off on that.
Okay.
Associated Governments in Northwest Colorado.
That's, all of us tend that, but that's mostly Mike, so.
Transit Advisory Committee, primarily you, Commissioner Lane.
Okay.
CSBGV Board, Mike, that is you as well.
Okay, that's typically transferred to the vice chair.
Do you want, Wendell, do you want that?
Let's just spin the historical. Is that all right, Mike?
Yeah.
So that's thirty-one CSBG.
Veterans Officer. Linda Reese. Club Twenty.
Be you and Wendell.
It's not D set anymore. It's one Delta County.
I'll take that this year. Thank you, Don.
Grand Mesa Scenic Byway is usually.
And I'll take that one, too.
Okay.
We've been having Lindsey sit in on those. We can just appoint Lindsey then if you want. It's up to you. It's Grand Mesa. That's fine. Let Lindsey do it.
Thank you. Region Ten Representative.
We're going to switch that up this year and let Mike take that one. All three of them, four of them?
Then the alternate.
And I, I can be alternate.
That includes the transportation as well.
Okay.
Okay, Three River Regional Transit Coordinating Council. I don't know that that's.
Part of the, that's part of the GBTP.
Delta County Tourism Cabinet.
I'll, I'll continue on that one.
West Delx Scenic Byway, Wendell? Or do you want Lindsey?
I had some other Lindsey. That's, yeah.
Workforce.
Um, I am still on that. I've been they were supposed to change the way that whole thing worked, but I haven't heard what's going to happen, so. I'm trying to find somebody else to take that role since I'm about out, but so if anybody wants to. It's a the states, the states actually trying to change their process a little bit, so don't know what's going on with that, so.
Want to wait to see what it's.
A Colorado River Water Conservation Board, currently Commissioner Koontz.
Correct.
And Gunnison Basin Roundtable.
Wait a minute, no, that was a conservation board's rover.
Oh, that's right. Yep, thank you. And Commissioner Koontz on the Gunnison Basin Roundtable.
Correct.
GMA Coopering Agency.
Let me skip the methane working bits.
It's the. I've been doing that one. If you guys, I'd still do it if you need me to. For the Forest Service, yeah.
And Gunnison San Brown Steering Committee.
Maybe that's you. You're the, you're the subject experts.
Uh, Colorado Counties then.
I will do that one. And then we've already made the appointment of Annie to the health.
That completes the, we only have one for Southwest Colorado OBOE.
Um, that's, that's John and Quinn.
And that is thirty-six.
Recommend a motion here.
I'll move, we approve the appointments for twenty twenty four as presented. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County Treasurer Lisa DePoy is here for a resolution. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
This morning, I would like to present the resolution meterizing myself to deposit and invest public funds. Changes on the stories will link to to last year's presented resolution is on page three. Changing the bank name of Bank West to BMO as well as the investment to BMO in section three. Everything else remains the same.
Very good. Then I will move that the board adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash R dash zero one. Resolution authorizing Delta County Treasurer to deposit and invest public funds. Second.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next for your consideration is the reappearance of Esther Koontz to Delta County Library Board from February first, twenty twenty four to January thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
I'll make this motion to say Commissioner Koontz, the grief at home. So I'll move that the board reappoint Esther Koontz to the Delta County Library Board from February first, twenty twenty four through January thirty first, twenty twenty eight. I'm going to abstain, so.
I'll step down and second that. Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you.
With the record show that Commissioner Koontz did abstain.
Next is review of the BOCC calendar, Lindsey.
I heard some rumbling that tonight there was not a Republican meeting. It's been changed to
the ninth.
Um, January eighth, Delta High School groundbreaking and a meeting. January eleventh, at eleven AM, oh, sorry, um, what are AM committee meetings?
That's just me.
So backing up to the ninth, we potentially may have you have a special meeting so that you can certify the mill levies. They are due on the tenth. We are, Jolene has presented all of the mills to all of the districts. And those districts then have to have those to Leona by this Friday. And then we'd be ready for you guys to certify them on the ninth. So we're just waiting on a couple of the special districts to confirm. But that's a potential if you want to put a placeholder there.
Could we do it at eight o'clock? I've got a nine thirty appointment.
Okay. It won't take but a half hour.
Yeah, we could probably still do it at the eight thirty. You'd still have time.
Okay.
So we do an eight thirty?
Eight thirty, yeah. I'd say stick with it. That's what people are used to. Let's stick with the eight thirty if we can.
January sixteen. We have another Board of County Commissioner. And then January sixteenth, that's three thirty PM on Florida. January eighteenth, eight thirty AM, and AGNC legislature call. January twenty fifth, eight thirty AM, another AGNC legislature call. January twenty seventh, three, um, it starts at five PM actually, Delta Health Foundation now.
Ends the work session.
Yeah, we've got a land use code work session. Don, on the nineteenth, I'm showing a CCI legislative briefing. Um, yes. It just, uh, just a Zoom call.
Does that include everybody?
Yeah, anybody that wants to get on can.
And then on the twenty sixth, I've got nine to four steering, CCI steering.
Yeah, that's, that's the meeting in Denver, and I will be at that one.
Okay.
It's actually the twenty fifth and the twenty sixth.
Okay, thank you, Lindsey. Now, do we have the holiday schedule?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Okay. I'll give the showmanship report for Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report for this Sunday, December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Male inmates county jail thirty-three, female inmates county jail five. Male inmates Department of Corrections, three, for a total of forty-one. Average daily inmate population of the week of twelve twenty-four, twenty-three through twelve thirty-one. Twenty-three was forty-three point three three. How you get a point three three? Uh, nine o'clock, we have a High Country Shopper update. Okay.
Come on up here to the microphone. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Tina, the owner regrets that she could not be here. He is under the weather, so I'm representing. My name is Stu Carlson. I'm a writer and editor of the paper, and I think she sent you a packet.
Yes.
Yes.
So. So, yeah, we're just here to petition you to consider, um, using the spotlight and shopper as your paper of record, basically. And if you have any questions for me, that we, um, we're locally owned and operated. We are free and probably most important for your consideration. Um, our circulation is more than twice that of any other publication in the county, so. It might stand to reason to.
Okay.
We, uh, we have, uh, with, this is the first time since I've been on the board that we've had a, another option for this. So we are gonna have to, uh, probably take this through an RFQ process for, for pricing and qualifications and make sure that we, uh, make the, the correct decision on that. So, uh, we will, uh, get with the attorney's office and make sure that that is posted, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
So what is your circulation?
Um, well, it's growing. I don't know if you all are receiving, so we went to a subscription um, method over the last few months. And I think at the moment we're at eighty-six, sixty-eight. And that is a total circulation um, including digital. And we're, we're still getting calls. People are asking, why aren't I getting my spotlight and shopper in the mail? You know, because we have gone to the subscription model where, uh, you have to request. So all folks have to do is either call or get online. And then they can, uh, request a subscription.
Very good. Does that eighty-six, sixty-eight include the digital?
Yes, that does. I think, did she give you a breakdown of the, of the graphic like this?
I haven't seen it.
I can leave it with you if you would like to see it.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time. All right.
Just leave these with you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Terry. Thanks, Stu.
Thank you.
Is there any other commissioner business?
I have none.
Uh, should we adjourn until ten o'clock for County Attorney?
The one that's listed is an executive session. So, so the adjourn.
What did the board wish to do, then?
Rip the Band-Aid off.
Well, we still have to do the holiday.
Okay, so we can do that really quick.
Okay.
So, uh, we already had New Year's Day, so I have a monthly day on January fifteenth. At Washington's or President's Day on February nineteenth. Um, Caesar Chavez Day is March thirty-first. We didn't have that on the handle here. Um, but it is on the federal holiday calendar.
Lindsay, why don't we, um, put something in writing?
Yeah, let's type something in writing so we can make that decision.
So we'll do that. If you want to, that after the ten o'clock, after executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Well, I will, uh, I'll move that the board, uh, go into executive session for advice of council under, uh, section twenty-four dash six dash four two sub four sub B of Colorado revised statutes. Uh, this is discussion and vice regarding the process adoption for the, uh, uh, twenty twenty-three amendments to the Delta County Land Use Code. Present in this, uh, executive session will be the three commissioners, Robert Valet, John Verre, Terry Stevenson, Lindsay Mitchell, and we will, uh, when we come out of executive session, we will finish Commissioner Business.
I'll second that.
Motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Just remind that the, uh, everyone present that, uh, because this is an advice of council, the, uh, session does not need to be recorded. Uh, but I'll remind everyone that it's, uh, contain their comments in regard to the hosted, uh, item.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it. Going to executive session. Ron Terry also. Okay. Welcome back. We came out of executive sh- session. We're continuing with, uh, the board, uh, commission of business, and we will review the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. So Monday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, New Year's Day is already gone and by. So Martin Luther King Day, January sixteenth. And then Monday, February nineteenth, President's Day.
Wait, is the, we observed on, right, isn't it? Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen on.
And Martin Luther King Day is on January fifteenth. And Monday, February nineteenth is President's Day. And we go to May twenty-seventh, Memorial Day. June nineteenth is Juneteenth. Thursday, July fourth, Independence Day. And in September, the second, Labor Day. Monday, November eleventh, Veterans Day. And then November twenty-ninth, it'd be Thanksgiving. Uh, twenty-eighth is, uh, Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-eighth. Friday, the twenty-ninth is day after Thanksgiving. The holiday. Then Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, be Christmas. And then January first, fifth, January first, twenty twenty-five. That'll be on Wednesday, January first, twenty-five. Okay?
Do we need a motion on this one? Yeah, this, and this is our standard number of
Yeah.
days that we, we give. So I'll move, we approved this twenty twenty-four holiday, uh, schedule as amended. I'll second.
There was a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, so done. Is there any other commissioner bills?
I have none.
I did a rail report, so we will ban the turn. Thank you very much.